Very shortly call the, there we go. It's called the work session to order. First, or second I am on the agenda, I guess, are the meeting minutes. As far as June 20th, 2019 goes, I will make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Any further discussion on June? Follows in favor?
Aye.
July was not here, so.
Neither was I.
I'll make a motion to, oh wait, we don't have.
Yeah, we don't.
None right.
Alright, so that will stand for next.
Nope.
What, you're good?
Oh yeah, it's working.
And then, tonight's application, start with number one.
This is the one that I'm gonna have to recuse myself on.
Right. Anybody have any questions about clarity, or for clarity purposes, or anything? Nope, okay. Let's go to two. Matt, any thoughts or questions on this for clarity?
I talked to Andy earlier today about it. It's just, it seems as though there's a previous approval of a sign. They're just looking for a bigger sign. Roughly the same place, but a little bit closer to the road. So it's a little bit more of a variance than the one that's already there.
But is the, this is for a second freestanding sign.
Yeah, there's two signs there now. The dentist is asking to replace.
One of the two.
Yeah, because there's a dentist sign and then there's a sign for another tenant there.
And those were all approved?
What's there now is approved.
Okay, so theoretically, nothing's changing, although it's a little bit bigger, right?
Yeah, it's bigger and it's.
Got two posts instead of one.
And closer.
And closer.
Okay.
But they're still approved for two signs.
Yeah.
Are we saying that there's no history of record for two signs being approved?
No, the existing dentist sign was approved.
Okay, and the other sign back on the sidewalk in farther? Are we saying that's not?
It's approved.
Okay.
That was there first, so they're approved by default.
So it's not really a question of two signs, it's just a little bit bigger.
Bad sign.
Right.
It's not two signs, it's a bad sign.
Okay, do we have the, is there a prior actual resolution approving the second one?
There is.
Okay.
I don't have it here.
I'm just wondering how much of that approval was dependent on the sign itself?
That's a good question.
Or the location of it? I mean, we just shouldn't rely on the fact necessarily that two are there now, so everybody should be okay with you. We could, you give my.
That's part of the reason I advertise, even though it's the same setback. I included.
Larger.
Well, I included the setback because it's a larger setback.
Yeah.
It's a difference.
No, it's good. Okay. Okay, so for number three, I guess I'm kinda curious as to how this got here? Not that I, I mean, it's in front of us, it's part of our job description, but was it on us?
Actually, when I Google Street View, and it's been there since a good year.
Yeah. Turn of the century.
I've seen it, it didn't strike me as anything. I just assumed, no. They've dropped it off there.
Yeah, the reason it got brought to our attention is basically because of the sign that was on it.
Just a concerned citizen?
Well, we were.
Kind of a tenant.
Yeah, I mean, we got a complaint about it and then we started following up on it.
Okay, fair enough. You're gonna take that to your grave, I can tell you about identity. Good for you. And the last one. So on, I'm kinda hogging the time here, guys, but on the last one is, was this previously requested and denied? Or something similar?
No.
Okay, okay.
So they're just seeking a small sign right by the line.
In conjunction with whatever. Alright.
Was there some sign that was denied at some point? Was it the front?
I feel like there was something that, on the second one or something.
Yeah.
At the initial U of R, when they first came in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't give, we didn't grant everything that they.
Because they wanted multiple signs plus the way, you know, we, that was a pretty long one, though. That was pretty extensive last time.
That came back a couple times, because there were a lot of changes out there, so.
Yeah. Are they going to the Pittsburgh line? Does anybody know? Probably.
Good way to subsidize.
We don't have anything table, do we?
No.
Wow, okay. Alright, anything else to cover in the work session? Okay.
Were we gonna talk about that shed?
Um, I think that.
Oh, that's right.
The thought there is that it's a code enforcement issue, right? If you want to talk about it, we can, I don't.
I, yeah, would like to.
You'd like to?
I can, we can do it after, if you want, or we can do it.
I think that was like a.
I don't mind, we can.
Attorney.
Twenty-two minutes. But do we need to, you want?
Well.
Do you think we should go into executive session? That's fine.
Well, it would be an attorney-client session is what it would be. Maybe we should do that to talk about kind of the process, questions about that.
Okay.
So we can adjourn the work session.
Okay.
Until the public hearing at seven.
Alright, alright, so we will adjourn the public, oh, excuse me, the work session until our public hearings, which is seven o'clock. So we'll, at this point, stay on adjourned. Thank you. Evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. First part will be public hearings. We will ask the applicant to come up to the podium there and give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. After the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will likely have some questions. And then we'll ask anyone in the audience to come up and do the same thing, give us name and address, and then speak about the application. Once the applications are done, we will take a brief recess and reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's applications and to take care of any other business the board may have. Members of the public are certainly welcome at both the public hearings and at the deliberation session, although generally speaking, deliberations is a time reserved for conversations amongst board members, board members with staff, or with counsel. Tonight's agenda is, oh, medium-sized, I guess I'd say. So we should move things along, and as I said, you're welcome to stay if for whatever reason you feel you have something better to do, which I find hard to believe. Not, nothing personal, but this is so exciting. You can call tomorrow, call staff, and find out what action, if any, the board took on a particular application. We like to point out every month that we think the town does a really good job of informing neighbors that live near the site of an application, that the application is going to be heard, so that neighbors are fully informed of their right to come in and speak about it. The town does this by having the applicant post a sign, much like some for-sale signs. It's posted on the internet, posted here at Town Hall, and town also sends postcards to folks that live within a certain distance of the application site. And again, we welcome comment, it helps us do our job, and we appreciate it. That being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. And tonight's first application, board member Matt Piston is recusing himself. Okay, can you have the first application there, Andy?
Dan Stewart, Heritage Christian Services, 275 Kenneth Drive, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14623. Request area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a childcare facility on a parcel less than five acres in area as required by Section 250-13.10-A2 of the code. Building area larger than 8,000 square feet as required by Section 250-13.10-A3 of the code. Less buffer than required by Section 250-13.10-A6 of the code. A garage with less rear setback than required by Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code. And an accessory structure with less rear setback than required by Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 2730 Atlantic Avenue. The property is owned by Heritage Christian Services Incorporated and is zoned R-1-20. SBL number 124.01-1-2. Application number 19Z-0032.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Eric Schaaf, Marathon Engineering, offices in the city of Rochester, 39 Cascade Drive. Representing Heritage Christian Services, with me is Dan Stewart, Director of all their facilities. I'm going to give a brief overview of the project and the variances and so on, and then Dan can give a brief overview of Heritage Christian, which is a well-established operator of many facilities in this county and others. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. And by the way, it's good to see you all again. Heritage Christian, as I mentioned, is a well-established childcare operator. There are currently three other daycare facilities in Monroe County operated by Heritage Christian, who I may also refer to as HCS. They have operations in Grease, Henrietta, and Webster at the moment. They've been looking to develop another daycare facility on the eastern side of Monroe County for a number of years, in order to provide daycare to more children, especially in this area of the county. A number of sites were evaluated, we worked with Dan on a couple of those. 2730 Atlantic Avenue best fit their site selection criteria. The project is located at the northeast corner of Atlantic Avenue and Scribner Road, which is about 1.75 miles west of where we are tonight. Heritage Christian is proposing to construct and operate an 11,500-plus-or-minus-square-foot building, one-story, on this 2.7-acre parcel. As Andy mentioned, it's zoned R-120. The proposed use of a daycare facility is a permitted use under a conditional permit. We have requested that and had an initial hearing before the planning board. The existing building, which is on-site, will be demolished. The neighboring property to the north, up there, this is the parking lot, is the Bay Trail Middle School, Scribner Road Elementary School campus. The neighboring property to the east, again, over here off the picture, is Rochester Christian Reformed Church. In each case, as you see, the land closest to our parcel is open land, which then turns into parking area for each of those two facilities. To the west, across Scribner Home, Road, are homes, which continue up to about here, which front on Scribner. Diagonally opposite the property to the southwest is the infamous, I'm sorry, is the former Shadow Pines Golf Course, which is now owned by the town of Penfield. We had requested five variances as identified. After discussions and appearing before the planning board, and further discussions with town staff, we have modified the layout and are now only requesting four variances. The variance for the shed is being removed from consideration, if you will. We have relocated that shed to here, which is well beyond the 10 feet. We had originally placed it here, and the reason for that was because it contains playground equipment, and we didn't want to put it in a position where children could hide behind it. Children have a tendency to do things like that. You're trying to keep an eye on them, it'd be best to minimize that opportunity. By putting it in this location, again, there are no unattended children out in the play areas. You're always attended by a teacher or two, but this way they will always have line of sight because of the equipment there and where the teachers are. So it still works, but we've removed that. We're not setting a precedent for locating accessory structure, abutting a property line. We are left with four variances. Three of these are related to the childcare section of Penfield Code, that Section 250-13.10, which was written a number of years ago, and quite frankly, for which many variances for most of the other daycares in Penfield have been granted. Town of Penfield has a code regarding the maximum size of childcare facilities. In the code, it's capped at 8,000 square feet. They also, in that same code, specify the maximum number of children, 135. Doing simple math, that results in a space per child, which is dramatically less than what Heritage Christian has established as their standard. Heritage Christian is proposing to serve no more than 120 children in the proposed 11,500-square-foot building. That's 95.8 square feet per child, which is substantially higher than the 59.3 feet that is prescribed slash allowed by town code. Heritage Christian provides a high quality of care in a superior environment, which benefits each child, and that is the basis for this variance request. The amount of outdoor play area provided also exceeds the standard prescribed in the code. If you total up all this outdoor play area, it's over 25,000 square feet. It's over half an acre. Which, even if every child was outside at the same time, provides over 200 square feet per child. Operationally, the children go out in staggered groups, again, all supervised. So the effective play area per child is even higher. Again, this goes to the high-quality experience that Heritage Christian provides. The setback and buffer variances are a direct result of maximizing the play area for the children and locating the Atlantic Road access, as far as we can, from the Scribner Road intersection. So we are asking, as was mentioned, the buffer to adjacent residential property lines prescribed by code is 100 feet. We're asking for much less than that. However, again, we point out, the residential property to the east is the church, with empty land, then parking, then their building. So effectively, there is a substantial buffer to that property to the east. Similarly, property to the north is a school complex with two schools. Directly north of our property is open space land, if you will, again, then a substantial parking area. So again, the intent, providing a buffer to other building-type things, is met. We're left now with the dumpster, I'm sorry, with the requested setback variance for the garage, which is four feet. We're asking for 26 feet versus 30 feet. We've located the dumpster enclosure directly at the end of the access drive off Scribner Road. Yes, we're an engineering company, but it doesn't take an engineering company to figure out that having it directly at the end of the access drive is one of the most efficient places one could put it. It makes for a nice, straight, safe operation. We then abutted the garage next to that dumpster enclosure, sliding it down four feet. We're not going to have an empty space again. That would not be good for the kids. We could slide it down and cover it, or we could slide the dumpster, but again, it all just works, so we are asking for that four-foot variance. And again, I will point out, it's from the rear property line, and the rear property line, what's above it? The empty space and the parking lot. Therefore, we respectfully request that these four variances be granted. We've been to the planning board a number of times. This is our first appearance before the zoning board, but we have worked on this quite a lot with staff and town. We've discussed all the various site elements, utilities, drainage, traffic, landscaping, et cetera, and we're on their agenda again for September 12th. I will now have Dan go through a little bit of information about Heritage Christian, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. My name's Dan Stewart, Director of Facilities, Heritage Christian Services, 275 Kenneth Drive, Henrietta. Heritage Christian Services was founded in 1984 by four families that wanted something different for their children. Started with a single home to serve a number of individuals. That has grown, today we're up to over 120 different facilities, from group homes, day programs, childcare, so a wide variety of reach to people with developmental disabilities. This particular site here with the childcare, as Eric had mentioned, the number of children, hours of operation would typically be 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. There would be approximately 31 teachers that would also be support for this, this operation. The building would have, will have a kitchen and a staff lounge, nursing mother's room, therapy room, two family rooms associated with each end of the building, director's office, additional restroom, mechanical rooms, reception and hallways. Once again, building up to why this building is above the 8,000-square-foot, as per the code. As Eric also said, with the outside areas, the playgrounds are divided based on children's age and where their classrooms are located, so it's direct entry from where their classrooms are directly into the playground areas. We have had, as Eric had referred to, a lot of conversation and traffic with this. We have had a full traffic study completed, which has also been reviewed by the town's consultant, and then also reviewed by New York State DOT. So, we're working through the details with them, and hopefully we will have this nailed down for it, so.
One clarification, although Heritage Christian provides a whole range of services to individuals with developmental disabilities and so on, this daycare, as their other daycares, are open to all children. It is not a restrictive.
Market rate.
It is a market-rate daycare. So it goes along with their greater mission of providing services, but this is not a limited slash targeted service daycare.
Okay. So to follow up on that, then, any profit generated from this daycare center will be put into the charitable mission of Heritage Christian, I assume?
Correct, to offset the operation cost of Heritage Christian Services.
And is, is that real, that's the main, if not only, reason for operating a business like this?
Yes, that is why we got into it. Developed our first site in Henrietta 10 years ago. Acquired Webster, which is rural junction, toddler's workshop, and then at the same time, we were building Stone Road.
Okay, so what's the total budget for Heritage Christian, if you know?
We're around $95 million a year operation. We employ over 1,600 full-time employees, another 800, 900 part-time employees. So it's a large impact on the community.
And what are your, let's say, primary sources of revenue, other than your daycare operation?
98% is Medicaid and Medicare-funded operations.
Any other government subsidies, or grants, or funds?
We do leverage different opportunities, whether it's opportunities to rehab a building. You know, there's some different funds with stuff like that that we're able to benefit from, to do an improvement to a house, to increase life safety code, accessibility in the house, to put a sprinkler system into a house to make it more safe for the individuals that live in the home, that they wouldn't have to leave their home.
Okay, and I assume there's some level of private donations as well?
There are some, absolutely. We do have a foundation, I can't really speak to that too well. Which, same thing, the objective on a lot of that is to offset, you know, if we need to do a renovation. Or, in the past, we built or bought a lot of two-story inventory, which now, as people age, isn't working. So there's not a funding mechanism necessarily to allow us to go build a six-bedroom home that would satisfy their needs now. So that is what a lot of that offsets. The other thing is with the salaries of employees, our competition is the fast-food industry, which everybody knows where that goes, and you're better, or making more money there than you would taking care of somebody in a drug care position. So the best we can, also with some of that money, we're trying to offset or give some salary increases to people.
Okay, and did Heritage do any sort of market study, if you will, or feasibility study before saying, hey, we should?
Yes, absolutely. We've worked hand-in-hand with the childcare council to show that this is a good location, that the need is in Penfield. This is on a major route that will benefit the program and also parents. You know, that's a big factor for parents when they're selecting a childcare center, is what is on the way to work, access in and out of it, you know, and the quality of the program.
Cost, who I imagine enters into the.
Cost, absolutely, but probably more so the quality of the program.
Yeah.
I don't know how to put it nicely, but parent guilt, we, I also, we pay a premium for the childcare that we went to.
I think I read a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago now, some article that it's, folks are spending more on daycare than on college, on some colleges now.
Overall, probably.
Okay. Do you actually own the property now?
We do currently own the property, yes.
Did you purchase it?
Yes, we did.
Alright, so obviously it wasn't donated, then?
No, Bill Gray, prior owner, and I have talked to Bill, let the family know that the house will have to come down if we proceed with this plan. We tried to work the house into the plans, it just raised a whole different arrangement of challenges.
Okay, so sort of, I have to ask you, if either we deny your request or planning board does, what's your plans for the property?
There's other things that could be allowed in on that property. I don't have an immediate answer for you.
But it's not as if the purchase were contingent upon approvals?
No, our opinion, could we put a group home there? It would be allowed by code. Is it the best use for that piece of property? My opinion and ours is that, no, this would be better suited. And the need, like I said, for us to develop another childcare on the, with the utilities there, that was a big question with the planning board, is, you know, why aren't you going out on Salt Road? Well, not that many people drive down there, the utilities aren't there. And by the way, there's not a piece of property really for sale that's suitable on it. Some of the others on the 250 corridor, we did look at, same thing, price points, access on and out of the, onto the road, similar challenges that we were showing here. This seemed to be the best fit for our, our needs.
Can you tell me, either of you tell me the reasons it was tabled at planning board?
The primary reason, and I'm beginning to sound like the guy that wrote Catch 22, was they wanted to refer to zoning board and have us appear before zoning board, before they would make a decision. And that was the plan from day one, as explained to me by town staff.
You mean, they wanted zoning board to make a decision before they would make a decision?
Yes, and if you'll recall, on a previous.
No offense to any planning board member watching.
And by the way, you may recall, our firm was involved with another daycare facility, and I appeared before you and the planning board, and that went back and forth a couple of times before we were able to resolve who was going to make the first decision.
Yeah.
But yes, that's why.
I guess we all sign an oath. The, joy, the comments before about the square foot measurement per child, and your comment is, hey, we're much better, we exceed the standard set by the town. I certainly understand it. I just, I'm not so all that familiar with the, I guess, the reasons for that, so let me just ask you that. Does either your calculation, or as far as you know, the town's or the industry standard, take into account the type of space, or is it just, we're gonna have a building 8,000 square feet, and we're gonna have 100 kids? I mean, because to me, if you have a lot of storage.
Yeah, Dan can speak to the way the industry operates. The code is a broad brush.
Just generic space.
It says, thou shalt not have this many, more than this many square feet.
Yeah.
Thou shalt not serve more than this many children.
Okay.
Okay, I have talked to a number of people, and no one can effectively recollect the basis, the history, where this whole section of code came from. I've heard a lot of stories and whispers, suggestions, you know, a number of years ago, they were concerned about this, that, and the other, and it was put together to try and either restrict or prevent or allocate space.
Yeah.
But if you look at the number of daycare facilities around the town, you know, this does not match all those. does not match all those criteria. None of them match these criteria. So, in the interest of answering the required questions about why and so on, that's where we did the math, Dan is going to speak to the student-teacher ratios and the number of square foot and the industry, because he's much more familiar.
And then again, the type of space, too, because that argument seems to me, the validity of that argument, depends, to me anyway, on the kind of space, the type of, is it a good quality space that the kids are gonna use, and the teachers are gonna use?
Yep. All right. So start with zero to 18-month children, requires two children, I'm sorry, two teachers for every eight children, 65 square foot minimum per child. So that works up to a calculation, I believe it's 850 square foot per classroom. We'll have two of these, one on each end of the building, then up to 18 to 36-month-old, two teachers for every 10 children, 35 square foot per child, which calculates, I believe, just a little bit less than the younger children. Four-year-olds require two teachers for up to 14 children, same thing, 35 square foot per child. Five-year-old, two teachers for 16 children, 35 square foot, and then school age, one teacher per 10 children. What we also do on the classrooms is that we make them universal, so that if we've got a number of zero to 18, as we're developing the programs, we might be able to have four classrooms, so therefore, we need to meet the minimum square footage that that calculates up to. On top of that, we will have, which is a little different than our other programs, we'll have large motor skill rooms, so it'll be a room about this big here in front, that, you know, 400, 500 square feet, that we use for kids to run around, play ball inside in the winter. At the other location, Henrietta, we have got the convenience of the Peters Family Life Center, that the children go up to every day. The other sites, we did create smaller space, but we need just a little bit bigger based on our experience with that. The support areas, such as kitchen, restrooms, hallways, mechanical rooms, square footage adds up on those. We also, on each wing of the building, it's divided so that each age group is on the left and on the right. In the center of that, we do have what we call, refer to as a family room, so that if you have kids at different ages, they can come out into the center room and interact with each other in this family room. It might also be an area that you might bring a therapist in to work with children for anything from PT, OT skills, reading skills, or if somebody's just having a hard time, get them away from the fray of the classroom to settle down. So that builds up what our total square footage is on the building.
Does Heritage intend to use this property for any of its operations other than this daycare center?
No, we do not.
Okay. Does it use any of its other daycare centers for non-daycare Heritage purposes?
Well, yes. So the property in Webster, we run a day program for adults with disabilities out of the back portion of it.
Okay.
That property is substantially larger. I believe there's over 230 children there. It's just a much larger building that we were able to work, it would, working through the Childcare Council, to approve to put a day program in there.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you, but so that dual use, if you will, that was intended from the very beginning, or?
No, it wasn't intended. It was a matter of Monroe County taking away a property, Allison Park, that you guys were part of with us. They pulled that from us. We needed a place to go.
Yeah.
So it worked out to bring it up onto our property.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
No, Greece has no other, it's childcare only. Same thing with Henrietta, there's childcare only on there.
All right. So you mentioned the traffic, and you know, that may be the biggest issue in some folks' mind. And I understand that there was a traffic study done by, was that by a consultant that you retained initially?
Yes. We hired a respected firm, SRF Associates.
Uh-huh.
They did a traffic study. The town then, on Dan's nickel, sent it out to another firm, Barton and Lagoudas, and the individual that wrote the review letter that reviewed the traffic study was Terry Rice. That name may be familiar, because he recently retired as the head of Monroe County DOT. So it was an independent study that was reviewed independently by a well-established authority and expert, and that was also submitted to state DOT, and they had no questions, they affirmed the findings, if you will. So, yes, it was independent, but it's been reviewed and affirmed.
State DOT had no questions or no unanswered questions? I mean, I kinda find it hard to believe they didn't have any questions, but maybe.
We had none on that. We are awaiting their review-
Yeah, okay.
-of the driveway, okay, but we had had an early discussion, and there's letters in the file that said, yes, we agree that shifting that as far to the east as possible makes sense, and your driveway should be X many feet wide, and it is and conforms with them. So we don't anticipate any issues, but DOT is not as responsive as other agents, or I'm sorry, is not as timely in their review as some other agencies.
Okay. So let's talk about then buses, they're gonna be, well, are you gonna have buses on your property? You anticipate that?
We will have one 10-passenger vehicle-
Uh-huh.
-transport children around, but no, as far as a full-size bus, we will not have a full-size bus there.
Okay. And that's for, what, for field trips or whatever? Okay. So I know that there're gonna be school buses going into the schools to the north and coming out of that.
Do you wanna know the number per day?
The number per day, times per day, and then, you know, convince us that there's not going to be a-
In our particular site-
Significant conflict with-
Right.
-with your use or with anybody else's. I mean, obviously, Bromcroft or Atlantic, whatever it's called, there's a very busy road, certainly-
Right.
At the same time, the school's busy, and at the same time, your place will be busy. So 2:00 in the afternoon in the summer, okay, but 7:30 in February, when it's snowing, I think that's my concern, anyway.
Right. And that concern is shared, and that's why we engaged in the traffic study-
Yeah.
-during the early portion of this project's evolution. Typically, a traffic study is not done until you've gone, reached what we call the preliminary design stage. We did this during a sketch plan, and then we've reviewed it with the Planning Board a number of times. And we all have our own individual observations and perceptions and reactions to traffic. My wife will not tell anyone, and I am the most patient person in traffic, but that is why we go to the experts, who send out people and take their measurements and do all their things. I look at things doctors do, and I go, how is that possible? Well, that's why they're the experts. Look at, could I design an airplane to make it fly? Heck, no. But there's experts, they do, and it does. That's why we go to the experts in the field. So we hired the traffic engineers, and they did a complete traffic study. Will there be times when traffic is backed up? Yes. The traffic study says that. But does it say there are sufficient gaps to allow this? Yes. Will the impact of this daycare materially affect the large volume of traffic that is already on the roads? No. Based on their analysis, results indicate the existing transportation network can adequately accommodate the projected traffic volumes and resulting minor impacts to the study area intersection. Are we saying there are no impacts? Heck, no. We're not that foolish.
So tell us what the impacts are, that have been identified.
I did not bring the entire traffic study, because that was more of a-
Well, the best you can with what you have.
Let me go through it a little bit here.
Yeah.
The proposed project is expected to generate approximately 43 entering and 36 exiting vehicle trips during the AM peak hour, 50 entering, 56 exiting during the PM traffic hour. All approaches to the study intersected are projected to generally operate at level of service D or better during the AM and PM peak hours, under existing background and full build conditions. One of the things they do is they look at existing, is pretty much at existing. Background is this project. Full build is taking into account any other projects in the area that they are aware of. Okay? So it's full build out and full build conditions. The exception is the northbound left approach during an AM peak hour, which operates at one level of service below. No changes in the level of service are anticipated as a result of the proposed development. So, does this intersection work perfectly at all times? No. Is it going to decrease a level of service as a result of this project? No. When it's bad, it's bad. Is it going to go from bad to horrible? No. A queuing assessment was performed along the southbound approach of Scribner Road to Atlantic Avenue, specifically during the AM and PM peak hours. The proposed driveway location on Scribner will be impacted by queuing in the southbound, shared through right turn lane at times.
Okay, hold on.
Okay.
Repeat what you just said, except this time, do it in English, please. Catch your breath.
I'm gonna have another sip of tea, because my throat is-
Go ahead.
And again, I will apologize, I am not a traffic engineer, so I'm reflecting.
That's fine.
We have a driveway on Scribner Road.
Yep.
We agree, it's going to be impacted by queuing in the southbound lane.
Okay, so people going south waiting for the light?
In the shared, south, and the right turn lane. Yes, there's queuing there.
Okay.
That happens, notably during an approximate 20-minute window related to school drop-off traffic. There's a queue there. There will still be a queue there.
Right.
During the remaining time throughout the morning peak, vehicle queues impacting the driveway will be infrequent. I don't know, I didn't bring, this is an extract, I didn't bring the infrequent.
So-
Ques in the southbound left turn lane did not impact the proposed driveway location.
Okay. Okay. So if there are cars heading south on Scribner, and they're lined up, because it's rush hour, and they're waiting for that light, that happens every day, you wait, if you gotta sit through a light, you have to sit through a light. Same kinda thing on Creek Street, when you're headed to Atlantic, when you're headed south, and other streets. So if you're approved here, it seems to me, and maybe I'm missing something, but the people that are gonna be most impacted by this are your own customers, aren't they that are trying to take a left out of it?
Correct. And one of the things of human behavior, again, I can reflect on it, because it happened to me, and I think to many of us, when you learn there's a problem at certain times, you may adjust, many, most of us do, our schedules to try and minimize that to the best that we can.
Sure.
So there's a little bit of self-control. I am not looking forward to doing this. I happen to live in the Fairport-Pa�nton area, and in two weeks, the bridge over the canal is going to be closed.
Yeah.
A lot of people are going to be readjusting our traffic patterns, and I told my wife, the month of September is not going to be pleasant. After that, we'll all have settled down into a routine, whether it be adjusted route, timing, or whatever. We expect the same thing here, but you are right, the primary impact is going to be on people trying to get out.
So Dan, also, the other thing to keep in mind is, yes, we agree, people can't take a left here. They can, however, come over to this other entrance and rejoin into the traffic-
Sure.
-which is not queued up. There are gaps, adequate gaps, that the traffic study did refer to.
How are they gonna do that, though, if there are buses there?
Here, or is where the buses are?
No, when the buses do a drop-off.
The buses aren't gonna be coming down through here. The buses will be dropping students off at this location.
Okay.
Okay. There are a total of three buses, maximum, that will come to this site.
You're talking school buses now?
School buses.
Okay.
Yes. As per the school district, there will be a maximum of three that will come into this site to drop kids off or pick them up. Also, within Scribner, it's a half-mile walking distance, so there is potential that the children will walk to the school. We're not sure on that, and they can't speak to it yet. It's whether the school will allow it, is what the question is. So the three buses, once again, timing on that, won't be during that 20-minute queuing, coming out of here, that they'll be picking kids up, because they'll be in this line to queue to go into the school, or taking a left to come out of there.
What are your busiest times for drop-off?
Our busiest times? I've got a whole schedule, and as part of the traffic study, that I'm happy to share with you. I do have a copy of that.
Well, is it, like, you know, between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00? Is that when it's busiest, or we don't know?
I can pull it. So the other facilities, we have a pro-care system, so I can tell you what time the students are dropped off or checked into the program, how many people, what time a teacher comes in, because their time card is associated with that. So we've got a whole chart that gives you in five-minute increments what are drop-off and departure of the other schools, which we would assume would be similar to this program.
Okay. I was just, you know, I was just curious, because the traffic studies, it sounded like it said, you know, morning, average 43 people dropping off, but your capacity, you're looking for 120 kids. It seems like there's missing a lot of cars that are dropping off, if you're taking 120 kids here.
It's at peak hours, so if you spread that out, and I can share with you the hours of drop-off on a typical program.
Yeah, that's more why I was asking, in terms of, you know, how is that distributed across the day? Because if it's all at one shot, then there's a lot of traffic. If it's spread throughout the day, then it's just periodic?
It's spread throughout the day. You've got a number of kids that start the day right at 6:00, because mom and dad need to get in, and we've got some kids that are there at 10:30 in the morning, then are there till 6:00. It's a wide variety of drop-off times, and shift changes for teachers also.
And I imagine some cars have more than one child?
Yes.
This study was done in May or June?
This was done during the school season, school year. I believe it was June. I do have the report, and I'd be happy to share with you, is, with the Planning Board, it was submitted. So all the information is there, but yes, it was done during the school year.
I guess my question is, I think that, I wonder if the traffic study would have been impacted, had this been done in January or February, when I suspect more students are being driven to school by their parents, rather than taking the bus. It's cold out, it's snowy out, so you know what? They won't have mom and dad. Mom and dad don't want them to wait at the bus stop, will drive them in.
My only response is, neither the independent traffic, the person that reviewed it, or traffic consultant, found that the projections would be inaccurate. So I think to the extent that that may have been skewed, it's not going to dramatically or materially affect it.
Did they project it into cold weather, or just?
The way, again, I'm not the traffic engineer, but they do their sampling and so on, and that's determined to be representative, as long as it's during the school year. So we had to make sure it was done while school was in session, not on break, that type of thing. To my knowledge, there's no seasonality that is reflected into a traffic study for the school year, be it winter or summer, or spring and fall, let's say.
Okay. So having done the Bay Trail Run for five years, I do share the concern about the traffic. It is horrendous, particularly so in bad weather. You know, it's just more people are driving their kids in. So I guess I just wonder if that was taken into account in the traffic impact study. I don't have it in front of me, so I can't read it.
Again, one of the other conditions they looked at was full build-out, which is many other projects and their additive traffic impacts. So that would also take into account any variation between good weather slash bad weather.
Okay, so to, just to push back a little bit, full projects that you know about, but if we don't know about it, then you can't study it?
No, of course. I mean, by definition.
Okay.
By definition, one can't, but in terms of any other subdivisions, okay, and/or developments that are on the books, okay?
Okay.
Were taken into account.
Okay.
Obviously, if no one knows about it, by definition, we can't take it into account.
Didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
No.
How does, how does the scale of this, this proposed project deal with, like, your other three locations? And I said Webster's a larger building, is a larger lot size as well, how do those all compare? I don't know if you had those numbers?
No. So, the Henrietta facility is 1.47 acres, 10,000 square foot on the building. The Grease is...
9930 square feet.
9930 square feet, and I believe that's just under two acres. This total is just under three acres, this particular lot in question.
Yep, okay, thank you.
How would you describe the settings in which the Henrietta, Webster, and Grease are located? Are they comparable, would you say, to Penfield?
Yes. The Stone Road property, across the street is a fire hall, next door is residential, right in the backyard is residential. To the left is an apartment-type complex.
Is that zoned residential, where that daycare is?
It's also zoned, yes.
'Cause it's right behind the Stone Ridge Mall, right?
Correct.
And that is still residential?
Uh, right behind, it's a block, it's on Stone Road.
And Stone Ridge.
Stone Ridge. So, it's a full block and a half, you can't see the commercial traffic up there.
And then, the Webster's, general industrial?
It is, also with some residential in the front of it on May Street. There are a number of homes in there, some apartments, some, some business.
And then Henrietta is pretty...
The Henrietta is...
General business.
General business, yes.
Right. Okay.
So, the, the remaining variance that's sort of not related to daycare, the garage, can you, can you tell us why you can't comply with that? I know it's only a four-foot variance, but it sounds like you put it there because it's the best place to put the dumpster. And if that's the reason, that's a reason, that's fine, I'm not looking for you to invent anything else.
We did it that way because we wanted to keep it at the edge of the play areas, the perimeter of the properties, you know, to, for the safety of the kids. So, we pushed the dumpster up there, and we're keeping, using that garage also as a little bit of a buffer. You know, obviously, could we slide the dumpster and the garage down four feet? Yes. Could we create a empty alleyway that would have to be enclosed? Because that's, we're not gonna create an alleyway for the kids to run into and hide and that type of thing, presumably. It was thought that this particular layout would be most efficient, a minimal variance request, especially when you consider that for this particular site, the property to the north, although zoned residential, is occupied by a school, and the particular land use immediately north is empty vacant land, grassy field with an asphalt parking lot. So, the impact of having that four-foot variance for the garage was felt to be minimal. So, we made our request.
Okay. Anything else, Marie? Yeah, and we'll have other opportunities if there's nothing. Andres, anything at the moment?
At the moment, no, thank you.
Not at the moment. I do wish we could have seen the traffic study, I wish that could have been in our packet.
Well, we could, we could see it.
It has been submitted to the town planning board.
Okay.
And, quote-unquote, there's a planning board, there's a zoning board, and, you know, we try and keep the...
Understood, understood.
But the town has multiple copies, it's on their Z drive, G drive, whatever it is, and I can certainly give you more copies.
We don't need more copies.
If you'd like to peruse one tonight, Dan happened to bring his, I just didn't bring mine, but it's there, as well as the review study by Terry Rice.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, whoever wants to go first, feel free.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Northrup. I live at 1777 Scribner Road, which is the property on the very corner of Scribner and Atlantic. I wanna thank the town of Penfield for providing us with the information, because we, we have gotten those in the mail, and we are quite grateful that we are able to attend these hearings. We are recently new owners of the property, we have lived there about a year and a half. We actually looked at the property at 2730 Atlantic Avenue. We were looking for a home for our daughter, and we purchased the house on Scribner instead. That property is a five-acre property. If Heritage Christian had purchased that, they wouldn't have needed any of these variances, especially if they intended to just bulldoze the property. Instead, they purchased the property on Atlantic, knowing that they would need these outstanding variances, which doesn't seem wise to me. We feel that these variances are quite outrageous, and we know that many residents on the street are opposed. One of the questions I have for Heritage Christian is that they said that many daycares in the area have been granted these variances, but I would like to know exactly how many other 11,000-square-foot daycares that border residential properties in high-traffic areas have been granted those variances. So, that's a question I have for them. I'm also wondering if there is a fence around the play area, because we had heard that there wasn't, and has the planning board shared the neighbors' concerns with the zoning board? Do you know that?
Not formally, not in the form of a memo or anything like that, but obviously, staff worked together, and messages and thoughts and such are past. I know Maria attended the hearing the other night, so somewhat is, is the answer. But if you have some, I mean, let us know.
We share the same concerns.
We've heard it before, yeah.
My husband and I are both schoolteachers, so we're on the road at the proposed rush hour time of the traffic study. We know that traffic is horrendous, and our concerns lie with the traffic, they lie in the location of the driveway, which is exactly across the street from our driveway, this is our driveway right here. So, we were worried about those people, anybody taking a left out of this area. Last we heard, they had no plans to put in a generator, yet, actually, last Thursday, the day of the hearing, we all lost power on our street. So, one of our concerns is winter, again, what will they do with all those children when power outages happen? And we actually have a generator at our house, because the previous owners, they must have had power outages that were common. One of the proposed play areas is 69 feet from the road. I have a two-year-old, and I would never let my daughter play 69 feet from Atlantic Avenue. The air is toxic, and taking down all those trees, sounds like not a very smart idea to me. But we just feel that the variances are outrageous and outstanding, and a person also looked at that home, who was an in-home daycare provider, and she intended to keep the house and run a daycare out of the home. Her offer was denied, but I guess I go back to, if they had just purchased the property that we live at, they wouldn't have had to have any of these variances.
So, let me ask you a question. Let's just pretend for a minute that they didn't need any of these variances, because the lot size was appropriate, et cetera, et cetera. Would you, would you still be opposed to the use in that location?
My husband and I have been talking about this, that very question for, since we've, we've known about this. I mean, we would love to see it just be kept forever wild, but it's not our property, so...
Right.
We keep asking ourselves, you know, if, if a residential track was going in there, would we feel the same way? It's, just seems like it's gonna add a lot of traffic to the area.
Well, and that, honestly, that's what I was getting at, is it, is the, the issue, I mean, you don't have to answer this, but do you really care about the variance for the garage?
No.
It's a four-foot, right. You did answer it, so thank you for your candor. It seems to me that the issue that you're focusing on more than anything, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but is, is this traffic issue. So, that if they did have the five acres, or that 8,000 square feet, whatever the numbers are here, if they met all those, and they didn't even have to be in front of this board, would you be in front of the planning board and say, "Don't grant it, because the traffic is nuts, and it's gonna, this is gonna make it worse"? I, I, I don't wanna poo-poo any other arguments you have, but that just seems like that's, that's the main, and frankly, that is the main concern to me as well. So, I not, I don't mean to minimize it at all, I just, you know, we have the relatively narrow issues of these variance requests, as opposed to the over, you know, the larger question of should it go there to begin with. On the other hand, if we say no to these variances, it's not gonna go there.
Right.
Well, they have their remedies they can pursue, but, okay. Anything else? And I didn't mean to cut you off if you had more.
No, I was just gonna say, our, our town motto is, Penfield is a town of planned progress, and I think we need to respect the variances that have been put in place to keep these areas residential, if, if that's our goal as a town, so...
Okay, before you leave, though, I wanna ask a question of Andy, and maybe, maybe after hearing his answer, you may have, how many, if, if, if this were a subdivision application, how many, how many homes could go there? And I know there's water and all that. But ballpark, Andy, I'm not gonna hold you to it. 10, 5, 40?
I really couldn't give you a number, I mean, it's not a...
Jeez, I gave you three choices? All right, okay.
It's really hard to say.
All right, all right.
It's not a very big property for a subdivision.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'd be more than one, though, right, Andy? You could say, you could answer that.
It'd be more than one, yeah.
Okay. I know it's freezing in here, folks, but don't worry, they turn off the air conditioning any minute.
My name is Ashley Schultz, I live at 1755 Scribner Road, about six houses up from my neighbor. I also do not agree with the variances that are being requested for this property. I did not come tonight prepared to talk about traffic, but I did send an email to the planning board after last week's meeting, that I'd happily forward along to this board. My personal disagreement with the variances kind of comes from reviewing the town board for childcare facilities. There's 11 bullet points in the code, only eight of which are actually rules that the facility must follow, and the applicant is requesting relief from three of them. So, if you can barely comply with half of the zoning codes that are outlined for a particular property, it feels to me like that development may not be a good fit for the space. In the application, the board asks why they should grant the variances, and if the difficulties or hardships were self-created. Again, I personally see many of these hardships as self-created. They mentioned at this meeting, and also at the planning meeting last week, that they considered several properties, and that's all well and great, I'm sure they've made the best decision for themselves, but I'm wondering if their decision process factored in all of the variances and all the special requests that they were gonna have to make in order to make the slot work, and even in order to get their project off the ground to begin with. And to me, that feels like a self-created hardship. Essentially, I have selected an inappropriate lot, and now I bought it, and now I'm looking for the town to kinda get me out of my mess. You know, as, as a private citizen, I can't just go buy a vacant lot in a residential subdivision, try to put a gas station on it, and then get upset if the town board says no, and then ask for special permission to put it there. And that's, to me, what this feels like. It's my job to do my due diligence, ensure that my plans for the property are feasible, and do all of the background work before buying the lot to begin with. But I do understand, I understand it can't be forever wild, it's, something is going to go there. If they didn't need variances, I wouldn't even have the opportunity to come up here and say anything. If the board does decide to approve these variances, and does move forward with the project, granting the special exceptions for this property, I would just ask that the residential area that's still on this street, that's still as a neighbor, get some extra allowances added to it, perhaps some better sidewalks, especially if they're gonna walk children on this sidewalk. I live nearby, I walk my dog through here every day, I run through here with my husband to go to Rothfuss Park. I'm an expectant mother, I fully plan on walking my kids across the street in the near future, trying to stay away from the traffic issue, but, you know, if we're going to allow these extra features for them, I think that extra features should be added for the residents to make sure that things stay balanced on the street.
Okay. Any questions for this witness? All right, thank you very much. Good luck to you.
My name is Kim Fulton, and I live at 1759 Scribner Road, next door to Ashley, which is five houses from the corner. I've talked in front of the planning board, I've sent a big, long email, which I will forward to you guys with a lot of bullet points, I'm not gonna go into them all tonight. Much of what those two great young ladies said, I agree with 100%, so I'm not gonna repeat everything. My biggest concern, again, is all the variances they need, so Ashley hit it on the head. How can you buy a property knowing that you're gonna need all these big variances, and then, again, expect, I would never think you could, I didn't think you could do that. I wouldn't do it. So, that, to me, doesn't sound like the best fit. Traffic, we've hit on it, I'm gonna hit on it again. Living on this road for 10 years now, it has gotten worse and worse and worse because of more houses going up behind us. Down the road, people come from Massedon. I leave my house at about 10:00 to 7:00, so I don't experience it, but the days I stay home from work, traffic backs up from here, past my house, I can't get out of my driveway for quite a while, when the schools, you know, traffic's coming, forget winter, buses coming in and out. What we forgot about is this exit for the school, that's where all the buses park. They're all trying to go left as well, and they can't get out, but people let them out because they know these kids, you know, buses have to get around. These people are never gonna get out of here. What I worry about is, I was a parent, I dropped my kids at daycare, if I had to get to work and I'm running late, or the kids were acting up, and they didn't wanna get out of the car, I might take a chance. What I'm afraid is, these people are gonna take chances to get out of there, and accidents are gonna happen. And even if there's a gap, and they can go left, these people are already coming in now. There's not a gap, it's hard to get out of there, 'cause then, these people are turning left, and the light turns the other way. So, and then, they said, well, the parents will learn their lesson, and all start coming out this way. I have a question. You have people parking here, dropping their kids off, they're trying to back up, cars are queued, these people are getting frustrated, they're trying to turn around, everybody's going in and out of here. It just doesn't, to me, doesn't look right. As a parent, I would hate this place, and I would be, probably not wanna bring my kids back if I can't get out of the parking lot and get to work on time. The question wasn't answered, are you going to have fencing? Will there be fencing around the playgrounds? What kind of fence, chain link or something more attractive? Chain link?
Yeah, we, you can ask, and, 'cause they need to use the mic, so...
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're gonna want you guys to answer that, you already have, but...
Okay.
Put it through the mic.
Um...
No need to apologize, it's a good question.
So, in my opinion, the traffic study, I question it. The only true traffic study is from people who live on these roads. And even though there's only a few of us here, because some of my neighbors couldn't make it, but they've sent emails and everything, it doesn't just affect the people that live on Scribner, it affects everybody that uses this road, in and out, every single day. And he forgot that there's a house right across the street here. You know, they, they focus that there's a parking lot, a parking lot, and that, but there's people that live here, these poor people, how are they gonna even get in and out? The driveway's right across from their driveway, too. Bringing up the sidewalk, at one of the planning meetings, they said they couldn't walk the students to Scribner Elementary, but now, I don't, now they're saying maybe the school let them, but there's no sidewalks. There are no sidewalks on this side, there's no sidewalks on that side. When my son went to Bay Trail, he walked to school, obviously, it's right across the street, but in the winter, instead of me jumping in my car and queuing up and getting into the traffic to go right across the street, I would literally go out at night and dig a path up the hill through the snow for him, right across from my driveway, 'cause I literally live across from the new extension. So, he could wa, so I'd be out there in the middle of the night, digging, you know, a path, so I didn't add to the, the mess, and then not be able to get to work on time. Passionate about it, emotional about it... Passionate about it, emotional about it, try to take that out of it. We've had to deal with Shadow Pines, dealing with the property behind us that Redstone Builders want to do, and then this. It just seems a shame to destroy that corner and take down all those trees. It's a beautiful spot, and I just feel like Penfield's getting taken over by building, and we're losing our country feel. And it's a great neighborhood, and I'd hate to see it. I don't know. I just, I don't agree with the whole shoving this giant building on this little lot and all that. Anyway.
Hold on, I just want to see if anybody has any questions for you.
I could go on and on, I'm very emotional about it, and I have a lot of points, like I said, I'll send you the email. It brings up a lot of other issues that I would be concerned about. I did have that question, what if this fails, or what if they can't build this? What would be there? A group home? What does that entail? Could that be put near a school? You know, it concerns me. And one other point, just because school isn't in session doesn't mean there isn't traffic in here. They have begun to use Bay Trail more and more and more for after-school activities, and there is constant traffic, even on the non-peak hours, and especially with the new baseball field that they built. Lots and lots more activities and traffic, and like I said, I see it.
Even in the summer? Or just later in the school year? Like later in the days?
Definitely in the school year. They use it on the weekends all the time, which that won't affect them, but they're using it more and more and more, which they should, I'm glad. The other last comment I want to make is, when these people can't go left, they're going to go right, and for some reason, and I know the reasons, everybody uses my driveway as a turnaround, because there's no trees at the front of my dri, you know, end of my yard, and it's a perfect turnaround. I get more people driving in and out of my driveway. It's, yeah, and then they're going to try and back up, and it's just a hazard. And if there's a big event at the school, people will be parking on the road, on the grass, on my yard, both sides, so.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, you guys want to come back up here, and I think, we certainly had the question about the fence, and I think you answered it, but let's get it on the mic.
Okay. Each of these little darker lines represents a fence. Each play area is fully fenced, accessible from the interior of the building, separated by age groups. We can even give you the square footage by, for each one of those, if necessary, but yes, it is a controlled access, okay? So all of those play areas are fenced. Again, that was one of the reasons we originally had the shed up there, we didn't want to bring it as close to the building. We found a location where it'll work, because the children are only out there attended, okay? So, again, that's, the sidewalks that were mentioned, these are existing sidewalks, they are there. Perhaps the only additional sidewalk will be one if it happens to work out with the church. We've talked about putting a sidewalk over to their parking area, should they desire it, or a heritage Christian desire. It was mentioned by staff, and we're exploring that option, but there's nothing definitive there. In terms of, I did a couple of, back of the envelope and quickly read the traffic study. The background projection that they make takes into account the recommended growth rate as specified by Monroe County DOT, so it took into account the Windsor Ridge subdivision, full build-out, and others, as well as an annual growth rate. So it does anticipate growth, it's not just a static look. And again, there was no change in the level of service, there was decreases in the gaps, but no change in the level of service. I did a quick back of the envelope, obviously, we aren't doing a layout here. According to the code, I believe one of the questions was, I think you asked it, Mr. Delouse, how many houses could go in there? 5.88 by minimum lot size, so five. That's without a layout. Could we get five? Might it be four? Don't know. But no more than that, without a variance. Again, Mr. Stewart mentioned, there are no plans, should, as a backstop, should this not go through? But in terms of the permitted uses on this lot, obviously, single-family homes are allowed, customary agriculture operations, and then you get into conditional uses, which is the daycare, but churches and similar religious institutions could go here by, as of right, if you will. Hospital and proprietary healthcare facilities, which I would interpret to be an urgent care facility, should their market studies want one there, which would sit here, and again, there would not be any of these variances and concerns. Public schools, parks, libraries, nursery schools and daycare centers, which is why we're here, municipal buildings and structures, not sure the town of Penfield wants to put up anything new, especially since you're getting sanitary sewers here now, after many years. Cemeteries, horse stables, private playground, athletic field, and group swimming pools, so someone, if Little League wanted to put in a second field or something, that's an allowed right. Bed and breakfast facilities, and then other yada-yada facilities as determined, but that's just a quick reading of the code again. There are no plans. I want to stress that. Heritage Christian does not have any. It was mentioned about the trees. One of the things we also had done during the sketch plan process was we had a registered landscape architect come in and conduct a tree study of the entire site, and that also was reviewed by the town's landscape architect, Mr. Zeratsky. Yes, there's trees on the site, they're the experts, I'm not, I don't have a green thumb. They're not valuable, there are a lot more in diseased or bad conditions. It was recommended that they all be removed, and that was the conclusion of people that know much more than I do. So we had that tree and vegetation study, and again, that was submitted to the town quite a while ago, actually, and is available on your town, in your town files. Those were the quick notes that I tried to take. Dan, did you want to cover anything?
The other question regarding the generator, no, we do not have generators at other locations. There's a procedure, if the power goes out, parents are notified immediately. You've got time to, before the building will cool down, I think they've gotten up to an hour to evacuate. Heritage, we do have portable generators if needed to maintain. We would come in with a portable generator.
Okay, thanks. Do you have any, either a study, or a notion, or just a thought of where your customers will be coming from in terms of direction?
No, I don't. I don't really have anything that would say that it would be coming down Scribner or up Scribner, east or west. No, I don't have anything that would indicate that.
All right, well, I, I'm not a traffic expert either, but what I'm, what I'm trying to think is, is there a way to control the exiting from Scribner? Like, if you have many people coming down Atlantic, coming from the east, dropping kids off, and then taking a right, coming in the Atlantic entrance and going out the Atlantic entrance, it's going to be easier than turning left onto Scribner. I have no idea, and apparently you don't either.
Well, there was discussion of that.
Yeah.
Could we do a right turn only?
Yeah.
It's very seasonal. Once again, that 20 minutes per day, schools in session, eight, nine months, you know, per year.
Right.
So it's a very seasonal use on it. What we can do is encourage and talk to the parents and staff to say, hey, use this entrance, exit is more conducive than trying to take a left here. Once again, your benefit here, to get back out here, you're better off coming right down this way to head west.
So why not require that, as opposed to suggest it?
We can look at it, but it's a matter of, like I said, seasonal. There's many times of the day, even after 5:00, that this is open.
Mm-hmm. I get it, but the problem isn't 5:00. The problem is, you know, that rush hour. So if it makes it a little bit more of a pain in the neck, frankly, for you and your customers, but it eases the situation at 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, and 3:00, 4:00, and 5:00?
Well, but that's, I think, our point. It will impact our customers if they're not able to take a left.
Would you rather have it impact everybody else that uses the area?
I don't see, if they're turning into a gap, there is no impact. If they can't turn and exit, they're the ones impacted. Yes, some people have said they may, they may take unsafe actions. I respectfully disagree. Parents are not likely to deliberately do something unsafe. Do we all make mistakes? Yes. But, you know, the point is, if they're not able to make the left turn because there isn't a sufficient gap, they're going to be negatively impacted. The fact that they are waiting in the driveway does not impact the traffic on Scribner.
Well, I, I don't, I wouldn't be so sure of that, in the sense that people, maybe they're letting other people out, and you have courtesy accidents, there's a, don't eliminate the impact of other users of that road, and I mean that in the nicest of ways.
And you're right, I should not have been as absolute, but again, the primary, if there's a deleterious impact, it's going to be on the...
That's obvious, that the folks trying to, your customers trying to turn left out of there, they're going to feel an impact.
And if they don't, then they will do what, the same thing that, not allowing them to turn left, they would have to go out the Atlantic.
Yeah.
And they will sort of self-learn.
And I have no idea whether this would work or not, but have, did you give any thought to having some sort of cross-easement with the church for the Atlantic exit to be further away from the intersection? I mean, does anyone use the church parking lot on Monday at 8:00 in the morning?
We did, we did look at that. The challenge that we thought by doing that would be that, now we've got through traffic here, potentially if somebody that's queuing here, I'm going to pull into church parking lot here, I'm coming all the way through.
To beat the light, yeah, okay. Well, I suppose they could try to do that here.
Absolutely, they could. The best we can monitor it and try to prevent it, but, you know, usually, this isn't as much on the queuing as other directions.
Okay.
And quite honestly, people that try and take the shortcuts, look for mostly unoccupied space.
Yeah.
And that's what this would be.
Yep.
And become very attractive.
I hear you.
Was there any consideration for having Scribner Road entrance just be an entrance, and then everything exits out Atlantics, and now you're queuing, you know, everything's farther away from, from, from the intersection? You know, if the state's encouraging it to be farther away, why not make that an entrance up on the Scribner site, so you can only come in, and it's easier to pull out and go both ways, and then you use the traffic signal to actually correct traffic for which way they turn and go?
It's simply a matter of providing choice and allowing the customers to determine their own preferential pattern.
Okay. So it wasn't a requirement from the state to say you have to have two entrances or means of egress or anything?
We'd never meaningfully explored having only one entrance.
Okay.
So I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
I would think it would affect your bus.
Right. The, you also get into turning radiuses and ability to exit, you know, for an emergency vehicle, you know, and that type of thing, without having to be turned around, so...
Well, if it was one way, you would still have, that would be solved.
No.
Sure.
Once they're in the site, they, you know, they would have...
So the turning radius is the same, whether you enter and exit on one side versus the other?
Correct.
So if it was a one-way...
And in an emergency, they will ignore things.
Correct.
Generally speaking, two means are better than one into a site. But we did not meaningfully explore that, so I can't give you a definitive answer.
Anything else?
So you had an intention to try to use the house when you bought this property, right?
Yes, we did. We purchased it with every intent of trying to make that into the school-age children's area.
Which makes, which makes me think, or makes me wonder, would you consider just building a smaller building?
Based on the economy of scale, having the number of students per teacher to build up to make the center profitable, no. If we've got to reduce, then no, we can't effectively run the, be profitable with it.
I mean, I guess I just, I'm curious, because I see smaller daycare facilities, childcare facilities, they're not 11,000 square feet, right? I really couldn't do it.
Well, and Marie, if you don't mind, let me rephrase your, what's the, and maybe the answer is what you're proposing, what's the smallest amount of square footage that you could build and still utilize this facility?
I couldn't tell you if I could take 200 square foot out of it, or 1,000 square foot out of it.
And it's, it seems to me it's probably a dollar and cents thing.
Well, absolutely, but in its quality of program, if I reduce, which area do I take out of there, and what effect does that have on the children that would be attending?
Sure. Or you reduce the number of children.
Right.
Could be, which now makes it, like I said, not profitable for me to build the whole project.
And that's why we asked the question.
Okay.
What's the smallest square footage? And by the way, that would translate into a smaller variance request. So what's the smallest that you could do and still keep it profitable? Because it makes no sense to build it if it's not profitable. We get that.
Right. So the smallest is what we're showing.
Well, okay. That's kind of seemed like a knee-jerk answer, but okay, fair enough.
Well...
Do you know the sizes of the other daycares in Penfield?
To expand just a little bit, it's, you know, it's a building, you know, we're trying to maximize the utilization of the lot. So you've got play area, you've got parking requirements, you've got drainage requirements, and you've got the building. That all puts together, this fully utilizes, you know, the lot. So you shrink it down, again, you would end up with quote-unquote "unutilized" space, which is, which may be fine, but we're, you know, trying to make sure it financially operates. Another point to your original question, we did have plans that we've shared with the planning board utilizing the existing house in addition to a building. There was never a plan to utilize just the house as a small daycare operation, which I believe may have been your question.
No, actually, I was going to get to what, actually, I was trying to get to where Dan actually just put to the chase, which was great. He's much more efficient than I am.
All right, well, I took it the other direction, but anyway, it doesn't matter.
But I mean, I guess to my point, you know, okay, so Greece is a 9,900 square foot building, but you really couldn't put a 99, it has to be 11.5. You know, I'm just looking for any kind of willingness to...
We can look at it, but once again, like I said, over in Greece, the multipurpose room isn't sufficient for the number of kids if they're just packed in there. Some of the way that we designed the hallways, the family rooms, aren't quite as effective as they could be, but if that's the only way, then we will have to go back to the drawing board to see what we could take out of it.
So you're trying to remedy what you think are some issues with the Greece project? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And now, before you gave some comparables in terms of, you know, other variances, things like that, given in Penfield, what were some of those sizes of the other daycares that you compared to?
I don't have the actual square footage of...
I just know you guys said that they were variances very similar.
I know that you guys just finished a project up on...
Yes, there's one up on Creek Street.
I don't mean to cut you off, and I don't mean to have him not answer, but honestly, that's going to be some information that I ask from staff to provide us.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you right now, I'm going to make a motion to table this.
Okay.
And I know, maybe that's not what they wanted to hear, but that's a bit of information that, when you, when you cite in support of your application, hey, you've granted other variances, that's a good thing for you to do, and it's important to us to be consistent.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, my memories are the worst as board members. We could have granted one last month, and I, I wouldn't remember.
It was three, it was three years ago for Creek Street.
Okay, yeah, and I sort of remember that, I live not far from there, so, and there's still not a daycare center there, by the way.
That is correct.
In any event.
That has nothing to do with the engineer, for the record.
Or hopefully the zoning board. But in any event, so, yeah, that's the information, because again, and if, and if that information and analysis supports your application, then, you know, good for you, good for you. But we should get the specifics on that, and I didn't...
No, 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 that's, that's fine, I'd actually rather, if we have the actual numbers, let's, let's go with that, you don't have to worry about it.
And that, you know, table, table going to give you more time to really flesh out your answer, if you will, to Marie's question, our question about, because we are supposed to grant the smallest variance that we can if we're going to grant one. Even if you ask for variance of this size, if their purpose can be accomplished by a variance of that size, that's where we're supposed to go, so...
Understood, and we agree, and I guess the best way to answer it is sort of what Marie was hinting at. We did Stone Road, that was five years ago, and now that they've had a few years of operation... And now that they've had a few years of operation, because Stone Road was the first one to be built from scratch in quite a while, Webster was inherited slash acquired, and Henrietta has been quite a while ago, 12 years ago. Times have changed, knowledge has changed, operating procedures have changed, and even in the five years since Stone Road, they've identified improvement opportunities to better the experience for the children and to provide a more effective slash efficient service. And so that's why some of the, oh, we need the large motor skill room to be enlarged. We want to realign the circulation pattern within the building. And again, these are things that the architect and Dan operationally can speak to, but those things result in a footprint which gets us to the request for the variance.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and I think that's good because you've not seen this application. I'm not sure I have it here with me, but we had originally looked to utilize the existing house as well as a very large building. So the total request at that point was for a much larger than 11,500. So in terms of, I know one of the things the boards look at is have you changed, cut back, and that type of thing, and that would be an easy thing for staff to pull out. Quite honestly, I didn't bring from a year and a half ago the application, but yes, it was much larger.
And so you'd still need all these variances?
Once you go over 8,000, if it's 8,500 feet, you need a variance.
Right, I know.
The five acre site, again, that, I'm not even sure where that came from and what the benefit of that is, when you have all the requirements for parking, drainage, and yada, yada. We're not, we're not at five acres, we never will be.
Okay.
And then the buffer to the residential, again, in our view, that was to the residential property line. And again, yes, we're fully cognizant, our residence is here and here, but it was to the property line, and that's why we focused on and mentioned, this seemed to be a great area because immediately adjacent to those property lines is open space slash asphalt, which is non-impacted.
Yeah. Anything else from the board?
Thank you.
And if somebody came in after, you want an opportunity to speak? You don't have to, I'm just, I know you came in before...
Sure.
There you go.
Wendy Reitz, 1689 Scribner Road, down here where the 20 townhomes are coming in and all the study impacts. Same issue here, coming out with the buses coming out, can't see on TV, this is an issue, not addressing the traffic flow to put a right turn lane from here into here, the accidents that happen at this intersection with the existing traffic, let alone the 20 houses that are coming in and the employees coming in and out here. Nobody has to tell you how bad the intersection is, 5 Mile Line in Browncroft. So this is going to be almost a nightmare for them to come out left, but with the buses and the staff during the school year and the residents that are right along here and all of Scribner, we happen to be the only walkers that walk to school for eight years into Scribner and Browncroft, and we take our lives in our hands every time because people zooming down this road. My next door neighbor allows the trooper to park on her lot to try and get traffic to flow down here, but this is just going to cause a tremendous bottleneck. There's the sidewalk here, this is the only sidewalk on Scribner where all kids walk, ride their bikes, there is no sidewalk on the other side of Scribner. Now you're making it a major traffic flow through that sidewalk. You don't have one on the other side of the road where these residents live. So sidewalks and parking are two of the biggest issues. And if there is a proposed water retention, hopefully it's abated for mosquitoes and other critters. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, well, thank everybody very much. Just one final note here, we haven't heard from anybody about, you know, with any comments about your, bad comments about your organization, and you know, you shouldn't leave, walk away from any of this process thinking that there's anybody that doesn't think anything but the best about you. You take care of some of our most vulnerable citizens and you should be proud of that. So, thank you. Okay, wow. I'm going to give another glass of water, but so when you call the next application, do it real slow, will you, there, Andy?
Caitlin Hoffman, Silver Maple Dental, P L L C, 2480 Browncroft Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow more than one freestanding sign as required by Section 250-10.12-C of the code, and a freestanding sign with less front setback than required by Section 250-10.12-D of the code at 2480 Browncroft Boulevard. Property is owned by Rich Sam Properties Incorporated and his own limited business. S B L number 123.07-1-21/2480. Application number 19Z-0033.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Hoffman. Thanks for having me here tonight. I am...
Daycare Center, is that what you're here for?
I am, actually, another one across the street. No, so I bought a dental practice two months ago, been in the area for about seven, eight years now, practicing as a dentist, and I'm really excited to be in this town, love the people here, so very happy to be here. So I did buy a practice and I'm calling it Silver Maple Dental, which is after, where I grew up, I grew up in Vermont, so Silver Maple is a tie between Vermont for me and home here now, so that's the reason behind the name. But I did buy it from a wonderful dentist, Mary C. Harrison, who had a sign there that has a crooked post and doesn't hold any weight, so I had a couple different, basically some sign designers come look at it and they both said, "It's not going to hold anything." So as much as I want to use the same sign, it's just not something that engineering-wise would support a new sign. So I think it's the initial post from the original building when it was built, and so that's the reason for wanting a new sign. When I did propose the sign, I had, I think initially a smaller sign, and then the landlord came to me saying he wanted a bigger sign because he would like for people to know the address. So that was, was why we switched it to the 72 inches by 32 inches. And Andy, I have to say thank you, I know I got your email about a poster. I did reach out to Skylight Signs to help me provide with something, and he did not come back to me with anything. And this week we had one of our best ones pass away, and we're switching Electronic Mechanical Record Systems this week, so I did not make my own poster, but that was something I was hoping to do. So basically, the plan is to do the town variance, which is, you know, 20 feet off the road, so it's me 20 feet 6 inches off the road, it's 72 inches by 32 inches, it's two colors, it's silver and green. It's pretty basic, it's our logo, which is something I spent a lot of time designing, it's very simple. I like it, I think it'd be nice to have something a little more official and formal just to let people know that I'm in that building, it's kind of tucked away off the road. There's another dentist on the corner of my building or my street, it's Ethan Aronoff, he's got a really big sign right out front on the corner on both sides. So it'd be nice if I had something to say there was a dentist in there. I know Dr. Harrison was looking to have a sign for a long time in that spot, and for whatever reason wasn't able to get something bigger, I'm not sure if it's the landlord or what, but the landlord was very nice about wanting to work together on this. So that's all I have to propose. It's pretty simple.
Dan stole my joke, so I was going to ask if you did in traffic studies.
I did, it's a ton of traffic coming in my office right now, so I'm sure...
Then you don't need to...
Yeah, that's not a bad thing.
No traffic, it's dead quiet, so I'd like for us to get that going.
So you said that it is 20 feet off the road, but it's actually 20 feet from the property line, right?
20 feet from the road to the first post, 20 feet 6 inches. And the second post is where the original sign is.
So, it's, Andy, is it that the property line, it's how far from the property line?
Well, it's going to be 5 feet from the property line.
Okay. And it's supposed to be 20 feet from the property line for...
Right.
Okay, so, and the reason I'm asking that is if it's 20 feet from the property line, there's a parking lot right there that would be...
It's right there.
Right, and the sign would be in the middle of the parking lot, correct?
No, so the sign is basically, this is, I don't have a good picture, I'm sorry. The parking lot is here, there is a big area of some bushes right here, the sign is a post here, and then this pro post, so it's not changing the positioning of the parking lot.
Right, so, but the reason, what I'm asking is, you're looking for a variance for the location of the sign, correct?
Yeah, because it's increased in size. So I was told I needed to come to the town about the size increase, because it's not going back on the initial post. It's going to be a new post, hopefully that's stronger, and then squared off and not tilting. Did I answer your question? I don't think I did.
No.
I'm sorry.
You're actually here for two reasons. Yes.
Okay, that's good to know.
Size and how close it could be to the road, correct?
Okay, so I think I'm away from the road far enough, I was told by the sign guy that I was.
I don't believe that the property line follows the road, though. I think that the property line is closer.
Yeah, the measure is not the road, but rather the property line, and those two are not the same.
Oh, so I don't know what the property line is, the landlord didn't tell me that was different?
Well, well, okay.
Okay, sorry.
What Matt was saying is...
He was given the application too, so they were all given the same thing.
What Matt is saying is if you complied, the sign would be in the middle of your parking lot.
Okay, well, that wouldn't be ideal, because it would probably get run over.
There you go.
That's where he was going with it.
I will say the one thing I don't love about where we are is our building, as the road is coming up, the building is really far in from the other buildings. And so even where the sign is, I was trying to kind of vision where this would be, it's still not nearly as visible as the signs across the street because of where it's positioned. So that's one thing I do, I would love for it to be in this location.
So, and it's fair to say that in the middle of a parking lot is not the optimal place for this?
It's not the best spot. There would probably be some accidents.
Now, as far as the size of the sign itself, you are seeking a bigger sign that was there before?
Yeah, and that was proposed by the landlord, which I'm fully supportive of that, but he wants the address to be on there so that people can see the address.
How much, how much bigger is it going to be?
Well, it's the one that I sent in the application, it's a 72 inches by 32 inches, and it was initially, I think 36 by 24 is what I proposed initially, which is what, I wasn't sure if that was, like, initially I was thinking trying to use that post, and that's why it's that measurement, and then it wasn't going to hold, so...
And have you already purchased the sign?
No, I have not. No, I purchased a Vistaprint sign for 36 bucks, and that's what's on there right now. It's cardboard.
I have no further questions.
Anybody else? No? Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alan Rainbow, Baldwin Real Estate Corporation, 1950 Brighton Henrietta Town Line Road, Suite 200, Rochester, New York, 14623. Request a special use permit under Section 250-14.3 and Section 250-7.20-B1 of the code to allow an exterior storage trailer at 1900 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC and his own general business. S B L number 093.02-1-23.111. Application number 19Z-0034.
Good evening, Alan Rainbow from the DeMarco Group, Baldwin Real Estate. We're located at 1950 Brighton Henrietta Town Line Road out in Rochester. Our company owns, manages, and leases the Baytown Shopping Center at 1900 Empire. And for the last two seasons, we've been utilizing a trailer for storage purposes, and I'm here to seek an official special permit to continue to use this trailer on-site Our trailer currently is located, and I'm sorry for the lack of detail from a distance, but behind an existing building where we have entitled space, which is on a stone parcel on an entry drive heading towards our existing Walmart. This is a picture of the storage trailer. I apologize, I should have brought some water myself. Excuse me for just a second.
Alan, there are cups in that little room on your right, if you want to grab a cup.
We've been utilizing this storage trailer for a number of purposes. We store construction equipment in there. Over the last few years, we've had corral areas back here that housed construction equipment, various debris. We've cleaned up those locations, moved the fencing and such into the trailer. We also now have, as you know, our tent for special events that we utilize, construction barricades, traffic pylons, furniture that we also store in the back of this trailer. So for any variety of reasons, the trailer makes sense for us, and we like to continue to keep it back there as we continue to build out the vacant spaces throughout the area. And that's why I'm here. Questions?
Who accesses the trailer? Is it purely DeMarco Baytown employees or...?
DeMarco Construction employees as well as site personnel operating the event center and working in the plaza.
Sure, and then normally it's locked when it's, there's things in there?
Always secured.
Okay. What's, so you said there's, you know, basically fencing, some tools, some equipment from on-site that was kind of cleaned up. What's the anticipated use for these going forward? In terms of like, do you plan on using them periodically? How often are they used? How, you know, is this like a monthly thing you need to get to or every day, every week?
Well, during the event season now, we're in there weekly, going in and out and taking out traffic pylons, barricades. During the winter months, when the tent is down, not as, not as active, you know, we're going to plow around it, so it's going to be seasonal material that's kept in there, which won't be as accessible.
Yeah, is there areas in the plaza that you've set up for, you know, basically storage of maintenance equipment, tools, salts, that kind of stuff, or not really?
We do. We have some mechanical equipment stored inside the building that we wouldn't necessarily want to have exposed outside. Problem is, we have to keep that in a vacant space. We're trying to lease the vacant space. We show the space, we got to work around the equipment if it's in there. But also, what happens is, we wind up leasing that space, we have to relocate that, the equipment and furnishings to another location.
Sure. With the anticipation that you, you know, you keep the tent, you keep doing those kind of things, keep doing events, is there plans to actually have some kind of permanent storage facility for yourselves as opposed to slowly moving a trailer around a plaza for the next 10, 15 years?
Hopefully not. Hopefully if we do our job right, we'll have 100% occupied plaza and no need for any storage.
Okay, but you said you use things for the tents and things like that for the events. I assume we're in, you know, we're hoping that we keep doing that or...
That's our, that's our hope, certainly.
So where would you put those things?
Well, I mean, we do have options, like I said, we, we're just trying to make it easily accessible and not tie up space that we're trying to clean up and market for leasing. So those, that's, that's the last alternative for us.
Okay, so are we thinking this is more of a six-month, a year, a year and a half? How, you know, what's, what's your anticipated timeframe for this?
Well, we've been using the trailer all of 2018 and up to this point in 19, so it's difficult to predict that, but I would say for, for probably at least another two years, I think would be reasonable.
Okay. And do you know why the trailer got brought up now as a... And do you know why the trailer got brought up now as an, as an issue as opposed to a year ago or whatever?
Uh, yes, I, I do. I believe it was because we allowed some banner signage from one of our merchants to be placed on, on the trailer.
Okay.
Which, which had been removed.
Sure, sure. Is there any better location to, to put this? You know, have you thought of other places to put the trailer? I know, I mean, is this, it's fairly centrally located, so it's probably not a visual from outside the plaza.
Right, it is, it is blocked. We also felt this is a good location because it is an existing stone lot, it's not finished, we're not gonna impede the pavement, the traffic patterns, anything along those lines. But it really comes down to the, the accessibility not only for the summer events tent, well, summer goes through October 31st, but also because of the proximity to the vacant spaces that exist up and down the street of shops and down this, this particular building. It's just easier to get to it. The rear doors to the trailer open out in that direction, so they go right towards the event center.
And then the backside of the plaza where the trailer is located, that's really the back of the retail space, so it's not customer-facing, that's not really an entrance where pedestrians are going through?
No, not at all. I mean, this is the backside of the building, that it's kind of tucked into that alcove, and there is this main drive that comes down that goes to Walmart, but, you know, they're only seeing the, the trailer for a brief period of time.
Sure.
The way that it's angled, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Either Alan or Andy or the, or fellow board members, the, the tent that we granted you permission to have, was there a time limit on that?
Uh, well, we only intend to keep it up. We, we put it up in April.
I meant, I meant a number of years.
It was a two-year.
Oh, okay.
It was a two-year permit.
All right, thanks.
And then subject to revisit by both sides.
Sure. Would there be an issue tying the trailer to the same timeframe? Or down?
Well, I mean, the, the trailer does serve that purpose. It helps us with the events, but it's not the sole reason why it's there. It actually pre, predated the, the, the events.
Okay, and I assume once something's built on that spot, because that is a lot where it sits right now.
Correct.
Proposed lot.
I think we're entitled to an 8,000 square foot building to be built there, so obviously, you know, that, once that's developed, trailer's gotta go.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? No. Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for that.
How'd the, the fireworks sale go?
Uh, well, there were no incidents, I'll put it that way.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that was, that was totally run by Walmart.
Yeah.
They didn't need our permission to, to do it, so, but it came off without incident, so.
Well, how's, how's the tent going? The tent?
Uh, I think, you know, as we got into this, we knew that we were gonna learn some lessons. The one lesson that we did learn is we started our season too early, and we're likely to end our season too late, particularly even with the farmer, the, the farmer's market. We started in April, yeah, there's not fresh produce available in April, and we jumped the gun a little bit. I think we're a little overzealous, and I think we may run into the same issue on the tail end getting into October, particularly with the movie nights and, and that kind of thing, so. Once the kids are back in school, the weather gets cooler, so we have to, we're modifying it as we go along.
This was the trial year.
Yes, it was.
There's also a late season for farming.
It was, it was, and that hurt us, and that's why we, we tried to consolidate and move the Wednesday activities in with the Thursday activities, because Thursday activities seemed to really have a draw, and we lost a little momentum with the farmer's markets, and now we're doing them all together, and seems to be going much better.
Good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Herb, Image 360, 275 Marketplace Drive, Rochester, New York, 14623. On behalf of the YMCA of Greater Rochester and URMC, request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow more than one building-mounted sign as required by Section 250-10.13-C of the code at 1835 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is owned by the Young Men's Christian Association of Greater Rochester and is owned mixed-use development. SBL number 125.01-1-34.13, application number 19Z-0035.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, all, all kind of help coming your way.
Thank you.
You did great, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Deb Herb. I work for Image 360, and here on behalf of URMC and also in collaboration with the YMCA, and they are, URMC is requesting a small sign to be put up next to the existing YMCA sign. It is non-illuminated, and it is requested in further, furthering their partnership.
Is, is that it? Okay, so is that the, the sign that's on the, the board right now, is that to scale?
Um, this is to scale, that is, the dimensions are 20 inches by 28.25 inches.
But so is that, the one on the right, is that the actual size of the sign?
I'm sorry, where?
Is that the actual size of the sign?
This?
Yes.
No, I, I just blew it up so that you could see it from one of our proofs.
Okay.
But it is to scale in the picture.
Okay. It's not up, though, right? Is it, is already, is it already installed?
Oh, no.
Okay. Why do they want this?
Um, I don't know if you're aware, but they are, they have a partnership together where they're bringing services to all 17 locations with the YMCA, and there isn't any identification in the main entrance, so it's their way of bringing, there's, in the existing building, which is in the back northwest corner, there is signage, but there isn't anything at the, at the main entrance.
And there's already been an application before this board for increased signage already, correct?
I am not aware of that. I'm a, I was not part of that. This is a different collaboration that I was brought into.
The U of R YMCA collaboration at this branch has been going on for several years now, correct?
Yeah, I think this is a little bit different because they're expanding their partnership, and in doing that, we're doing this at all, all of their locations, so what they're trying, in particular, on the east side here, is there is no, there is nothing in the, when you're walking into the Y itself, the, the main entrance.
Okay.
The only sign that they have is in the farthest corner that you cannot locate, and I have a little picture of that. So if you're familiar with the size of the, the building itself, it's way in the back, so the general population that walks through the main entrance is announcing.
So is the only purpose of that just to announce to the people going through the main entrance that there's a collaboration between U of R and the YMCA?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So you, I, I'm assuming since you didn't even know there was another application, you don't know why they didn't make, they didn't add this into the previous application for the variance? Is that, is that correct? You don't, you wouldn't know why they didn't do that?
I don't have any information from previous years. I was just asked to present the new collaboration, which I'm doing across Monroe County.
Is there any U of R signage inside the doors as you walk in, identifying this?
Not in the entranceway.
No, not once you walk through the doors?
I'm not familiar with that, no.
I know you've got several signs along the right-hand side of the, the main entrance as you come in with your car. It would be on the north side of the parking lot. There's about three or four, actually, U of R signs, and still not feeling like that drives the point home?
Apparently not. I was asked on both, for their collabor, their new collaboration, which they're bringing all across the county, that this is what I'm putting up in every location. It's not just in Penfield, this is the last location that we're.
Got it. Understood, thank you. So you're trying to be consistent on all, all of it?
Across the board, okay.
The monument sign, that has YMCA and U of R.
At the base, mhm.
Is there any possibility to add the language from that sign to that one?
Probably not without great cost.
Okay, that's what I figured as much.
We've, and we've done it with the city, we've done it with Gates, we've done, so it's, we're, they are doing it across the county.
And would this, and would this sign be needed at the rear entrance where I think the primary U of R entrance is?
I'm sorry?
At the rear of the, of the YMCA, because that's their primary entrance for the U of R area.
For their space, but they're also affecting the people that are walking in the main entrance. The whole collaboration is bringing health to the whole community, so I think this is their effort to collaborate with the YMCA. So is there, there is a separate entity with the URMC in the back of the building, they're also collaborating together, which is what we've been bringing the additional signage for.
And you have both signs at the back of the building, don't you? Yeah, you do.
I don't have any, I'm sorry.
Okay. At the back entrance of the building, there are already those two signs there.
The only sign for the URMC is in the back of the building, so I'm representing URMC this evening.
Okay.
The, in the back of the building, where the sign is that you guys were just talking about, are there any URMC signs in the door or in the windows, or is there anything other than that sign to identify that as an entrance for U of R?
Um, they might have vinyl, but there's nothing on the building, so.
Yeah, that's what's there, it's on, it's on the window.
Right, right. Have you, have you by chance seen the U of R, URMC Urgent Care Center on Route 441 there by Harris Whalen Park?
Um, I have been by it, but that's not.
Yeah, there's a lot of U of R, well, there used to be, anyway. Still are, I'm told, stickers.
Yeah, that's not.
Which aren't signs per our code, so it's kind of smart, but, you know, anyway. I don't know what you guys are gonna do when you merge with Rochester Regional, you're gonna have to change 17,000 signs.
I'm Image 360, so.
Oh, man, that'll be good for you.
I'm the sign guy.
Good for you. Oh, man. All right, I, you know, I guess the, this is, this is a relatively small sign and stuff, but it's, my fellow board members have, have sort of asked, I mean, you know, how much do you really need here? I mean, I get it, it's a, you want the world to know that you guys are working together, two great organizations, I understand, but it's a lot.
It's a very large building as well.
Yeah. Okay. Do you, do you know whether URMC experiences a lot of people using that entrance when they're actually trying to get to the back?
That I'm not sure of. I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right. All right, thank you very much. All right, we will, that was the last application, so the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a, four minutes enough, everybody? Four-minute recess and reconvene in the back of the room and probably go in the order that we went earlier, but I think it'll be a lot quicker for number one. Thank you all. Okay. For some reason, this is, so, we'll back in session here and let's go to item number one. That is, I'm lead on it, and do we need to do seeker before we table?
Wait, you don't need to do it before tabling, just, I would keep it together when you do the, the disbar.
Yes, okay, so I am going to make a motion to table this. Second. And the reasons that are the information and/or reasons for the table, information requests, I don't know if we have access to accident data at that intersection.
I can check.
If you could check, and if we don't have access, if there's a, a way to get it, I think that would, just numbers. I asked the applicant to come and give us some more detail on the answer of what's the smallest-sized building that they could build there and, and make it profitable enough.
I think we said variances for other daycares as well?
Yes, so, so what other variances have we granted in sort of the, you know, maybe a comparison chart? That's a good way.
Include the zoning district that they're.
That's a good, good point. And then, I'm trying to read my writing here, meaningful, that's what that word is, okay, there is, somebody was answering some good questions about the possibility of only one entrance and exit, and I, I guess I'd like the applicant to address that, because the answer was we didn't meaningfully explore that, so if it's not feasible in the applicant's opinion, great, but, you know, let's, let's have an effort to look at that and see why. And then I, you know, and I don't know how easy this is, or, but it, it would be nice to try to ascertain some legislative intent for the requirements that are listed there. If, I don't know, I, I don't know when it was passed or whatever, if there's any legislative history, I guess it'd be nice to know that, so, looking at you folks there to kind of provide that. Why 8,000 square feet as opposed to 10, or 15, or why five acres as opposed to two and a half? Five acres is a lot of property, so if it's available, it'd be nice to know, because obviously we're dealing with that statute and being asked to grant some exemptions from it, so I think it would be helpful to at least try and figure that out.
Would you want to know if, I, I don't know when it was passed, but it seems like you'd want to know if there were daycares that were built after that statute was passed that did not require a, a variance, because you would need, they would still need presumably a conditional use permit, because they're gonna be conditionally permitted use in any district.
Right.
They might want to know that, too.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it just seems to me these, they know what they're doing, and, everything they need to do to be successful is here, from an operational standpoint, so, you know, why is, why would any statute say you need five acres? You know, whatever. Okay, but, you know, from where I'm sitting, obviously the traffic and accident potential is the biggest issue from where I'm, from where I'm sitting. So in any event, I would make a motion to table this for those reasons, and I think we have a second.
Second, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the abstention, of course, recusal. All right, very good, thank you. Number two. Right, everybody still here? Yeah.
All right, for seeker, I'll make a motion that this is an unlisted with, with a negative declaration, requiring no further action.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on seeker by Matt for a, I'm sorry, type two or, what did you say?
Unlisted.
Unlisted and a neg-dec. Second by Andrus, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. From an environmental statute standpoint, we're okay, we don't need to worry about that anymore.
They can proceed in their merits.
The application itself, I'll make a motion to approve the application. The proposed sign is in harmony with the standards of permitted signs within the spirit of this article. The proposed sign shall be compatible with and not detrimental to the neighborhood properties. Pro-sign does not by reason of its location create a hazard of any nature to the public in general, or to any owner or occupant of the neighborhood properties, and does not in any way interfere with the lawful aesthetic enjoyment of the public highway or neighborhood properties. Plus, it's necessary to identify her business.
That'd be a great improvement from the sign that's there, too, second that.
Okay, so a motion to approve for those reasons and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Number three.
So, number three is an unlisted action, I'm gonna issue a negative declaration, as there's no significant adverse environmental impacts identified.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on seeker? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm gonna make a motion to approve this. I guess my one question is, do we want to set any time constraints on this?
Yeah, I, I would like.
I kind of want something, but I guess, what are you guys thinking?
Couple of years is fine with me.
Two years work for everyone?
It's fine. It's been there two years and it's.
Sure, so I'll make a motion to approve with a-
So I'll make a motion to approve with a two-year time limit.
Do we need to add anything about, I know the signs have been taken down.
It's against code already, the signs, so I think just as, you know, for the fact of having a storage trailer, I guess we'll assume it's a storage trailer, unmarked as demonstrated. So this location, it's not, you know, it's not in the highway, it's not in the way, it's kind of out of the way, it's behind the buildings, so there's no real impact for the area, you really can't see it.
So your motion is then that it stay in that area as opposed to, you can have a trailer anywhere on the property?
Um.
I just want to clarify that.
I think that's where the spot is that they want it, it's been there for two years, I think that is the spot. When the building comes up, they're saying a building could be up in the next few years, trailer's gone.
Yeah, or even next month, if you get an application, you want to do that for whatever reason, you want to move it, you can, but you still need the trailer, you can come back here, so I.
Yeah, that's fully fine.
I mean, it's a perfect spot right now.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? All right, a motion to approve, and did we get a second?
A second.
We did, yeah. Murray, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Make a motion under seeker that's an unlisted action with no, with a negative declaration requiring no further action.
Second.
Okay, so we have the seeker motion for declare it unlisted and issue a negative declaration. Any further discussion? And we had a second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
For the application itself, you know, I certainly don't think it's necessary to adequately identify the business. I think that there's plenty of businesses, but now with saying that, it's a small sign right next to a sign that's already there that's much bigger than this sign, it's not like they're proposing to go out and make an even bigger sign and take up more surface area of the building when it's already there, so I'll make a motion to approve it, but I think that we should probably start talking about.
Enough is enough.
Enough is enough, and not allowing any more signs in the area.
I would agree, especially the fact I think there's chances that this building could get larger with additional additions and then new entrances, and then what happens?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I mean, to her point, this is what's going on in all the Ys in the area, and I understand what they're doing, they're looking for a certain block, so I get it.
Yeah, it's just, you know, we see URM C everywhere, and if it's not URM C, it's Rochester Regional. Yeah, you know, that's the world in which we live now with two large healthcare providers like that, and that's fine, but everywhere you see, you see the signs.
And in this location, it's in the driver, in the parking lot, in the back of the building, on the side of the building, and not, when you pull into the building and out here, so.
And it's not feasible to go and redo the signs that are already up to say this in collaboration, which is, you know, I guess that's nice. Okay, so.
Second. Okay.
A motion to approve the application on the merits and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Actually, we kind of belong to something. Any other business? Are we good? All right, well then we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Good work.
Thank you.
Have a good night.